Is he all ready? I'm gonna call the people's order. Mr. Lyman, would you please come forward and do the motion?
Thank you guys for having me tonight. I don't envy your jobs, but I do admire your willingness to do them. So basically, what I want to try to give you tonight is just a little bit of encouragement. In the Proverbs chapter four, it says, "Get wisdom, get understanding, and forget in God; neither decline from the words of my mouth, forsake her not, and she shall preserve thee; love her, and she shall keep thee." And, you know, I think that's some wisdom right there that you can utilize. You know, get wisdom, in other words, we get that from God. And I think any decision, whether it be in general life with the home, with your family, or whether it be in government, if we'll just ask God, hey, you know, what's not best for people? What's best for everybody? What's best for our community? Then I think he will do that, because in James chapter 15, he says, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask, and he'll give it to him," and I think he'll do that. And then the last thing, which I think is a very important verse in Proverbs chapter 13 and 22, where it says, "A good man leaveth an inheritance to his children's children, and the wealth of a sinner is laid up for the justice." In other words, a good man, you know, when we think about an inheritance, most families think about, you know, goods, money, and things like that. But, you know, I grew up in this community, and, you know, it's always been a wonderful community. A lot of wonderful people in this community. And it's very important, especially when you're in leadership, that you understand that what you're doing doesn't just serve the community today and right now, but what you want to make sure you do is every decision you make overall needs to have the well-being and longevity of this community. And what are you leading? You gotta, you know, determine what are you gonna lead for your children? You know? What will be there for them in this community? So that's what I have in those prayers. Your heavenly Father, would you just come to here tonight? And I pray that you would just give these people the wisdom that they need to make decisions that will not only help this community survive, but it'll begin to thrive, your God only Father. It seemed like for a long time, it struggled and it's chugged along. But Lord, I think it's time that you just open up the doors and let things begin to happen for the people in this community. Lord, I pray that you will help have unity and a bond here in its government. We're not always going to agree, but we can agree to disagree. And Lord, you can give them all wisdom to make the choices that will be best, not just for today, but for tomorrow and generations to come, and that will help this community grow. Lord, I just thank you and praise you. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
My condolences to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keisha, all around, please.
Doug Brown.
Here.
Cameron Calvert.
Here.
Alex Jones.
Here.
David Lee.
Here.
Ron Smalling.
Here.
Chandler Wilkerson.
Here.
Everyone is present. We have a form. First item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. And there is a notation with requested amendments. These items, the first item is to put on a letter to TDEC for approval for the County Line Water Plan Annual Application. And the other items are pretending they're the police department, and they were not discussed with the work study. And I wanted to get you, you guys have an opportunity to add those to the agenda.
Can we just make a motion to amend the agenda? Make a motion to amend the agenda, adding those items that we've already proposed about?
No, second.
Motion is second. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I'll make a quick put out. Does anybody here speak of comments? Step up here to the podium.
Yeah, my hand. I just wanted to say, I think you all are doing a good job. And I think it's everybody responsible, it's responsibility to be here, because it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
I would like to make one request on those two items. I have the letter to TDEC to put on first.
Yes.
He's got some sickness in his family.
Yeah. Public comments. And now the TDEC letters. Brian and, Brian, would you go? Brian should speak about the letters specifically.
We do that when we get to, I mean, when we get all of those stuff.
Well, that's what's, oh, you wanna do? The minutes instead of first. Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay. Minutes for the six, 15, 20, 22 meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Do you guys have any comments? That's all. The six, 15, 22 minutes have been approved. Six, 30, 22, special call meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the special call, June 30th, 2022 meeting?
Sir. Motion is second. Does anybody have any discussion about those meetings? All in favor? Say aye. The minutes for the seven, 7, 20, 22 special call meeting? I'm gonna make a motion.
I shouldn't have read the minutes for the seven, 7, 22 special call meeting?
Anybody have any comments or anything? Because I'm at the minute. Not all in favor? The June 20, 22 financial statements? I'll let Ms. Keisha speak to that right quick.
I'm gonna go make a motion to defer this to the next month. Do some corrections over there.
I'll second.
Motion is second. No discussion, no motion to defer. Ms. Keisha, follow along when you prefer.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll discuss this at the work study, and then we'll have this on the agenda. Okay, there is no public business. We're getting into the new agenda, how the family's new business.
Let me make a motion to approve this letter. I'm trying to get approved. And then they still have to, who wants to speak, stay there in discussion. Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the letter to TDEC on the offer that we will be participating in with Paul.
Okay, the letter, I think that the letter is, got some additional information, I'm gonna have to do it again. So you gotta make a motion with that number. I wanna do it like him present his presentation.
Okay. We don't give a second, we ain't gonna do that anyway.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the TDEC letter supporting the County Line Water Plan. Ms. Keisha? No discussion, no discussion.
Okay, so, so before we could issue the letter of commitment with county to go in, we had to get scorecard back. We got that back this week, and that's what I passed out to you guys. Once you guys get that out, and we go through the numbers, and you guys wanna write them down, so you can see them in front of you. It's not a whole lot to remember, but it would probably be easier if you didn't wanna write them down. So you're talking about, you've already decided that you're gonna put some money in with the county on the, on the water, on the, on the water plan that the county proposes to do. If you look at your scorecard, and again, this is why we wanted to get it back, you're required to spend 25% of your total grant amount on the things that are red. The 25% of 875,000 is about a little over 218,000. We're gonna say 220,000 to keep math easy. And you don't, when I say you don't have anything in red, water loss, your water loss is less than 40%, you're at 29%. Your asset management plan over there in red on the left is both water and sewer. And you're required to do it. Your wastewater treatment plant capacity is greater than 80%, that's something you could look at. And your state withdrawal compliance order, you're in red at that as well. And that, that was the supplemental environmental project, the flow monitor terrain, and the asset management plan. We talked about those three things last month. Well, you're required to do all or part of at least two out of three of these things. And that all or part of two out of three of these things requires a 25% minimum. So you have to take at least $220,000 out of that 875 to be in compliance, not have to eventually pay all this grant money back on their own dime before you put anything into the water project. So we're gonna say that number, 655. So we're at 875 minus 220, we're at 655, okay? So that's potentially 655,000 to put into the county project for the water regionalization plan. Okay? Whenever you, Mayor Smalling, Kim, Kim Northfleet, I think I said that right, and, and Brian Price, we were on the phone this morning. Brian developed, developed a spreadsheet, which we put all these different numbers in, scenarios. So the bottom line is, the county had $10 million. $10 million they set aside for this, this big water project. They agreed to put 1 million out of that 10 in for match money on this first non-competitive face. So they've got 1 million that they're gonna put in. So the minimum number, so it's like 999,000 dollar match when Westmoreland puts in 635,000. So you, you have to be at 655 to meet the grant requirements. You have to be at 635 to be able to do all four roads that we show on there. At 635, that you don't exceed what the county's agreed to for $1 million. So you're sitting in between 655 and 635 if you want to do all four of the roads. If you want to do all four of the roads, my suggestion would be that you, that you do 640 towards the county. That gives you a $5,000 buffer on the county side and a $15,000 buffer on the grant side. And you're getting both. If you don't want to do the 640 amount, there's another option, which is 450. That, that's been discussed, it was discussed today over the phone. If you do 450, then the county match goes up to 1,184,000, because Westmoreland's not putting in as much. Well, at that point, that means one of the roads come out, and the logical road that would come out would be Bill, Bill Henson, Bill Henson Waterline. It's like a 200,000 dollar project, so they, they get your match back down there, you know, to the, right underneath the million. So really, you're looking at putting, putting 450 in and taking Bill Henson out, or you're looking at putting 640 in and leaving Bill Henson in. Okay? All right, so let's, so those are your two numbers. You got 640, you do all four roads, you got 450, Bill Henson comes out. Okay? Let's talk just a little bit about the resolution that we passed last month. So there's, there's two sets of money, like we said. There is the state money, which is the 875 we're talking about, that we just finished discussing. And, and, you know, the county's gonna put whatever, there are 3.5 million of state money in there. The importance of putting theirs in, so that's the state money. So you passed two resolutions last month. The first resolution was for 875,000, saying that you agreed to take the ARCA money, that you agreed, you know, to do the matches, that you would go with their whatever guidelines they had. The second resolution that you passed, and it says at the top, 10 of the budget, we did not have, we did not have the scorecard yet. So we didn't know what we would have to put money on or not put money on. So we, since none of this, this correct budget had been put out there, we put what we, we thought or knew that we were gonna have to spend money on. You know, until we got the scorecard, we wanted it covered. So we knew, we hadn't got the scorecard yet, we didn't know what we were gonna be mandated to spend on. So we put 210 in for the SCP project. We put 60 in for flow monitoring. We put 70 in for asset management. And we put 200,000 in for, for water systems improvement, a little over 200. And we put 175 in for a match. And that gave us this, this number of 715, 969, 58. Well, after you decide what you want to do tonight, for instance, if you want to do, you wanna do the 640, all right? You know, that basically leaves you, basically leaves you, what is that, 200 and, 235,000 dollars that you can spend towards your sewer, you know, to either do this SCP project, or the flow monitoring, or the asset. You don't have to do the asset management number one, you have to do that one. Then you need to decide if you're gonna spend it on the SCP project or the flow monitor. So really, what you need to know is that, if you want to do the Archer Water Project, which you'd probably get more bang for your buck doing that as far as getting grant money, then you're gonna have to spend some of this correct allocation money. You know, I was told today, in this, all this dust movement target, they're saying today that they've not accepted these templates on this asset management I was telling you about. They're estimating these asset managements are gonna be about 100,000 now, instead of 50,000, like I told you last month. So if you got 230, and you wanna do the bigger project, you probably got 100,000 coming out for the asset management. And you got another 130,000, you know, because if we do this supplemental environmental project, which you're required to do for your consent order, which is on this card down here, you know, it says you have to address the consent order at the bottom. You're gonna have to pull some of that direct allocation money out to cover that. But that's a decision that y'all can make later. Because you're not allocating any of this money that we have in here. And, you know, you can, you know, you may wanna, I mean, you can basically do anything you want to do with that. We were just putting it in there last month, because we knew that, we knew that you had something on paper saying that you were gonna cover those projects. Now you got your card back, you can move this around, do what you wanna do. But if you do the 640, you're gonna have to use some of this money to cover one of your, your projects to, you know, to make this work. Is that?
Not gonna lie, it's a lot.
That, that is a lot. That's, that's a lot, so.
But, so, going back to this fourth part. So I know you, you were mentioning three things. Now is that, whenever you say asset management, is that a all or nothing? So all of the, all our shit in paper here, all these things that are marked in red, they all have to be completed, or is that?
Yeah, because they're, they're all part of the asset management, and they all have to be completed.
So that is, that is one thing, is all of it?
That is one thing, and they've listed everything as that one thing of y'alls. So you're gonna have an expensive asset management plan.
All right, so, and, but it's my understanding, all three of these things have to be done, right?
You have to address all or partially at least two out of the three.
Okay. So. That's what, that was kinda what I was getting at, so then you said partially, so I didn't know what that meant, whatever we were referring to, the asset management or not. So is that partial or all of it?
Ah, well, you know, that's something that y'all can, can decide. Because all you're doing right now, all you're doing tonight is deciding if you're gonna allocate, you know, 640 or 450 towards the county project. And, and the, the end result of that is 640 means you have to take Bill Henson out. I mean, I'm sorry, 450 means Bill Henson comes out. 640 means Bill Henson stays in. Whenever you get ready, you guys, you're gonna do, you're gonna do an application with the county, what the county's gonna do now. And that application for the county's gonna have one of those two numbers in, either 640 or 450, whatever you all signed tonight. And you're gonna do a separate application, that you're gonna take the balance of that money in, you know, whatever that is, depending on if you do 640 or 450 tonight. Then you're gonna do a separate application, and that application, you're gonna put how you're gonna use that money. Are you gonna put it in this asset management plan? Or are you gonna put it, you know, if you're gonna, when you write the application, it's all cost estimates and narratives. So you don't know till you bid anything. But when you submit the application, you know, after tonight, if you decide you wanna do 640, when you submit the application just on behalf of Westmoreland, which is the 15% match, the county's the 10, the county's picking up your 10. You're not paying, it's 10, but that million dollars is the 10 that we're talking about. So you, at that point, you'll decide, well, do I want to? When I submit this, do I, I'm, I'm gonna say you do the 640. It's, it's y'all's decision, it's your money. I mean, maybe you do the 450, but 640, that's 230,000 dollars. So after tonight, when we sit down, everybody sits down and talks, if you say, well, you know, we wanna spend 100,000 of this on the asset management and the balance of it, we're gonna put towards supplemental project. Or we wanna spend 100,000 on the asset management, and we're gonna put part of that balance, you know, we're gonna pay for the flow monitoring, then whatever's left, you know, 30 or 40,000 dollars, we're gonna put on supplemental project. That'll be part of what you submit in Westmoreland's application. So you got a collaborative application that you're submitting with the county. And that collaborative application has a 10% match, which Thunder County's covering. 10% match, they agreed to cover, has a top of a million dollars. And the top of a million dollars represents that 635 number I told you. You gotta put 635 in. You don't put 6, anything, anything less than 635, that number goes above a million, and they're not gonna cover it. And I, I know that's a lot of information. I, I knew I was coming down here when I was in Vetha County, so I was just trying to get here. But I, I wish I had a spreadsheet that showed that, but.
Well, what I'm struggling with here is, is the balance of, you know, making that decision between the, the 600,000's worth versus the 400,000 worth, and how that goes back and forth between completing these things or not. Because I mean, obviously, I know we have to spend money against this in order to do what we're supposed to do with the scorecard. But, I mean, is the decision we're making, whether or not we spend more on these items on the scorecard, or more on the water project?
That's it. That's absolutely it.
I'm just trying to.
No, no, it's no more complicated than what you just said. You're deciding if you wanna spend 630, or, I'm sorry, 640 on the water project and do all four roads, or if you want to spend 450 on the water project, take a road out and have more money. I, I mean, it's really all kind of the same. I mean, if you take it out of the, if you, if you take it out of the water project, and you put more and more sewer, and you see these initial estimates we got here, you can cover all of those with ARCA money. That means you got less going to the water project. So really, you're deciding, do you wanna spend it on the water project, or do you wanna spend it on the sewer? And you got two numbers to look at.
Ms. Keisha provided option one and option number two. Option number two is the 450 option that I presented. And option number one was a tentative number earlier today for 675.
675 doesn't work, because you gotta, you gotta be at 655 to meet grant requirement.
Brian was recommended that we go to change option number one to 640.
That's what you want? Yes, Brian, that, the spreadsheet we went through many times, it was 635.
Forgot it here.
If y'all will send the spreadsheet, we can show it to you.
If you wouldn't.
Yeah, I'm kinda trying to. Me and Brian talked about it, the numbers are hard to hear.
And, and I wish I had more time. If I had more time, I'd pick them up. I just didn't have time for it, I got here, I know this would be.
Wonder what we just went through on conference call, Brian, Brian, Brian.
Say more, Brian, let me, let me.
That's what you start calling by, it's.
That don't work either.
Let me show you all, one, two, three. Let me show you all this, before it shows you. This is the 450,000 match. Right here's the spreadsheet, y'all pass this round. If you put the 450 match in, the county match is 1,184,000. So see, you're 184,000 over at 450. You put 635 in right here, it's like 999,800 dollars or something. So 635, which you're running. And you can see, when you're in the same scenario, when you put 400 in there, see, the county match goes up to 1,234,000.
And they can't go above that.
You can't go above that.
They have a prayer.
So.
We have to.
Look, they like to see 35.
No, no, you got a choice, you got a choice.
They will match for us if we don't do that, right?
No, they'll still match for you, but Bill Henson Road has to come out. Because if you don't put the 635 in, you're not, you're above a million dollars.
But our 450 will still get us matched if we took that road out, it would cover a little more money.
If you, if you only put 450 in, if you do 450, Bill Henson Road comes out.
Okay. Then he still, the county still helps us match?
County still helps, helps you match, but county only matches to a million, because you didn't put enough in, it picks them up, and then you're gonna pass that around.
This is really hard to digest.
That'll show you a little more.
Me and Mayor Callis went through this, I mean, at the same time, Mayor Smalling, all the back start since October. We thought it, we had it figured out, and we sat down again and met with TDEC separately, and our minds were blown, and then we kinda went back and digested it to where all these different pots of money just were confusing. But there's two pots of money and two phases of it. You have federal money, and then you have the state non-competitive allocation. 875 is a state non-competitive allocation. You guys have got to pass a resolution and then, or figure out however you're gonna spend the 875. And once you have that figured out, then you have to figure, fill out an application process, which Mayor Smalling.
We've already got a copy of it, we just need the numbers.
On TDEC, and that has to be done before November 1. And if that 875 isn't completely allocated before November 1, then it goes into the second part of all this money, which is the competitive round. That's where you're trying to make yourself the prettiest girl at the ball. Okay, that's where you're going to try to use the money that you used during the non-competitive, the phase one, to show that we're looking at a regional plan to where you have a better chance of getting approved. That make sense? So taking a step back from that, the county's non-competitive money they got was actually about, was a little over 4.5 million dollars. They're willing to put 100% of that towards this project right here. City of Portland got a little over 1.5 million dollars. We're putting 100% of our money towards that. So that's around 6 million dollars. The county is also willing to pay the match. The match associated with this project is actually 10%. And they're willing to pay the match up to a million dollars. Does that make sense? So what's going on right here is, there's a phase two ready. The county got 37 million dollars of that federal money. I think Westmoreland got around 675,000.
They got 717.
717.
But, but 10 billion, and I'll let Brian, 10 billion of that 37 is the money we're talking about. They've got 10 million dollars, y'all got 717, they got 37. They took 10 million over here and said it's just for water. And they took a million of that out to do the match for the first non-competitive. So they still got 9 million dollars sitting there.
And so that's something to think about. So let's just say, because it's kinda whatever you guys want. If you wanna get all four roads done in this non-competitive round, then put in the 640, I think is what Brian said. If you guys wanna pull out Bill Henson, then put in 450, pull out Bill Henson. And there's still a chance of you getting Bill Henson done, because the county still has 9 million dollars allocated to go towards phase two of the regional plan. And phase two of the regional plan also includes, the city of Portland's looking to commit to running a 12-inch line down 52 from our, basically right in the middle of town, all the way out here, we're gonna build a new old road station, a new old road tank, and also to put in a new pump. And that could be another supply option for the city of Westmoreland. That make sense? So you, you got your supply line. So you've got your supply line from Galton, but you could also have another supply from the city of Portland. And that's about the whole regional plan, getting kinda interconnectivity there. So this isn't an all or nothing here. So even though you guys are talking about whether to do the 640 or 450, you know, that's kinda up to y'all, but just because you pull Bill Henson Road water line out, doesn't mean that Bill Henson Road can't happen. When we go back to phase two, there's a good chance that it can happen. And the reason I would recommend for Westmoreland to make sure that they're a part of this is because back in October, we did a complete regional plan of all of northern Southern County. And these four roads were included in that complete regional plan. Also included in that plan was the 12-inch line from Portland out here. Now, that plan was $132 million, it ain't hitting. But we can probably get a good hunk of it going. And there might be enough going on out there, because as confusing as this is, there's gonna be some people who probably don't have their money allocated by November.
Probably a lot of people don't.
And so that will get thrown back into the competitive pool. That make sense? And so what I'm telling you is, is that the, if you did just three of the four roads, they're in the plan, that overall regional plan that was submitted to TDEC. TDEC's gonna see that we're actually working towards the overall regional plan. And then that makes us look even better at phase two, when we try to take the money the county has. Because in phase two, it completely changes, you can give a lot more money. In that case, you, it's 10%. I mean, it's just weird how that works at phase two. If the county puts in $9 million, it's a 10% match. That means you can actually get $90 million possibly. I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but theoretically...
But they have the money there theoretically to do.
That's how that would work. So by Westmoreland being a part of this phase one plan with this non-competitive, even if you only do the three roads, the city of Portland, we've got roads in there, that is needed for us to be able to have the capacity to push the water out. And that kinda lets the county, lets TDEC see that the plan that was submitted in October, that was the plan that was the bee's knees, it solved all the problems, but the price tag was just too much. We knew that, but they wanted a solution for everything, and that was it. But it shows that we're still working in that direction, and that overall plan may be achieved in the future, but it may take five, 10 years, it goes. So my recommendation is, whatever helps you guys, Brian says obviously 25% in your non-competitive has to be spent on one of your red-letter items. So you can either spend 640 and get all four of these roads, or you can spend 440 and get three of the four.
And have more to spend on your sewer, but it's really, you're either paying it out of your direct allocation, or you're paying it, I mean, you're paying for it either way. You're either pulling it out of your, you know, that 717 to pay for it, or you're pulling it out of the, you know, this 875.
And any money that you guys may have setting out, like for match money, well, you can do your own application during this non-competitive and follow up with something in the competitive. And in the case of the competitive, your guy's match is 15%. So you take whatever your money is, and I'm the world's worst at doing this off the top of my head, and that's just 15% of the total you can get. So what, what did we talk about?
You either done 15% on, so if you do 640, that's, that's, that's $235,000. You did the 640, you gotta have a match of 15% on 235. If you do the 450, you gotta have a match of 15% on 425.
You got $60,000 extra.
Let me, let me put it to you like this.
425 would be 15% of the total.
Yeah, so, so what it needs to be, $15,000.
Would be around $3 million.
Yeah, a little bit over a $60,000 match.
If you guys got $450,000 grand, you can get $3 million in the competitive. There you go. I just, I'm bad at math.
Yes, yes.
If you guys have $450,000, now, I'm not saying that you're gonna get the full $3 million, but you would be eligible for that amount. That make sense? So the big money is where you can actually get more is in the competitive phase. But to do that, you gotta, you gotta be the prettiest one out there. You're actually scored on those. This round right here, the reason it's called non-competitive, that money, that 875 is yours to spend however you want to, as long as there's a match. And the city of Portland and the city of Westmoreland is actually blessed, because Southern County's willing to pay the match for you. And so it's just where does the city, 640, 450, whatever. And then if the big money, and where it can really help us, is there's gonna be communities that just don't understand it, because it's just confusing. And it's gonna get kicked back to TDEC, because it's not gonna be allocated by November 1, and that's just gonna make the pool bigger. And when that pool of money gets bigger, if you guys have $450,000, like we just talked about, sitting there as a match money, your match is 15%, you can get $3 million.
And what Brian's saying, you know, you've, so I'm kinda getting back to your question now, or I think it was, if you have, whatever that number is, if you do 450 and you have $425,000 that you're gonna spend, you know, on this competitive phase, you're gonna have to put a 15% match on that. So that's 425 plus approximately $60,000. So you're gonna have about a half million dollar project to spend on your sewer side if you do, if you put 450 in on the water project. If you put 230 in, you know, you know, on the sewer side, and 640 in on the water side, then you gotta match that 230 at 15%. So whatever that is, you'll have, add 30,000, that you'll have about a $260,000 sewer project.
230, you get one and a half bill. So basically, my recommendation is, is the first round, the non-competitive round, is to set you up to show TDEC what your plan is for the second round. So if you guys do something towards water in this first round, then when we submit with the county in the second round, it makes our project look better.
And you probably want to hold on, whatever you, this 717,000, what he's alluding to, and he did a very good job of it, but you got 15%, you gotta match on this non-competitive. So sometime around, you gotta think until 2026 to spend that direct allocation to. So you probably wanna hold some of that direct allocation back, whatever, 3, 4, 500, you know, whatever the number is, 300, $400,000. So you see later in the spring how much non-competitive money that you, that you might get. So you gotta match money here for it. So if you have two...
So whatever we got left over, we can use to, as matching funds for a future competitive.
For anything you wanna use.
A future competitive.
As long as you understand. Yeah, I'm sorry, competitive, that's what I...
The TDEC non-competitive money?
Right.
It can't be used as a match.
Right.
But what can be used as a match, what we call it, is the fit money.
But this, this money that we're voting on right now, allocating for three water lines to be replaced as a part of the regional water project, or four water lines being replaced as a part of a regional water line project, that money, we can use in the future towards a competitive, for the competitive portion of this, correct?
No, because what you're talking about is...
So that just directly went against what Brian just said.
But what you're talking about is, out of the 875 pool, figure out how to spend all of that.
We're spending, okay, so just for clarity purposes then, because we're, we're taking a whole handful of dirt and throwing it in the water. So this 875... This 875, this money, we're spending it all, we don't have to match a single water, this 875.
Now, this is where it gets tricky, then, I mean...
But just for the purpose of this, for clarity, right now, for what we're voting on, this 875, we don't have to match any portion of that 875, right? Yes or no?
If you have to match whatever you don't put into the county project. So you have to match. So, so for tonight, we can come back next month, and we can talk about all of this and go in, go into more detail. And we can talk about this other stuff. For tonight, the point is this, six, if you want to do all four roads, it's 640 to the county. The county covers the match 100%. You don't pay any match on the 640. That leaves you 235 left for you to spend on things that will address the things on this card. You have to pay a 15% match on that 235.
Okay.
If you spend, choose to go with 450, then you don't pay a dime, you don't pay a dime on any of that money that you put in the, in the, in the county water project. There is no match. But then if you, if you wanna do 425 of that 875 on sewer, then you have to pay a 15% match on that. And that is the competitive money. And, and after November, when all this falls out, you all can, when we know what these real numbers are, we can revisit all that, but that's all hypothetical right now. The only known is what we just discussed. And you probably want to hold some direct, that 717,000 we're talking about. You want to hold some of that money, because you can use that money for your match on the competitive that we're talking about, that 875. And you can also use it as a match on the non-competitive, the hypothetical money that we don't know what it is, and we won't know until January, February. So you don't need to spend all that 717 right now.
Good deal. That, that answers my question, I appreciate it.
So to make us look like a parish girl town, we probably need to do all four roads and go with the 640.
That's up to you guys, you can.
I believe if we amend a road, it would be very costly to do it later as a separate project, even including the effects too.
I think it's the if I can do it. I understand, thank you guys for explaining. I understand, so I'm, I'm ready to go ahead and make a decision. The motion was to support the latter.
Which latter?
We had to, we had to.
You made the motion.
I made the motion.
Do you wanna amend the motion?
I'll be in for the motion, if you...
You'll be there.
Mr. Galloway.
I think we're the option, it's already optional, we're gonna change the 675 to 640.
Yes, yeah. We all got the code.
Option one was a latter.
Changing from 675 to 640. Need water for it.
We're going to amend it. Right, the second. We have a motion, a second, to amend the original motion to support the latter, and the motion is for 640 and not 675. Ms. Keisha, call her up.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes. The motion, as amended, is to support latter option number one, for $640,000 to, to support the county's leverage water line project.
Yes, sure.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. Second, for the, to support option one for $640,000. Ms. Keisha, call her up. We did have discussion on those things, anybody that agree? Ms. Keisha, call her.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion, carry. One of our items on the table. We'll, we'll skip back to the record and look at the rest of the items, we're pretending that these are... Second page, first item is... Aaron, there's nothing in our package with a dollar amount, with the amount of investment. He spoke to us at the work study, but we don't have anything in mind. I know it's over the $5,000 there. Be that face. We're gonna share that with a portion of our supply budget for this next year. Of course, it's under the $5,000 end of the year. He was wrong about this a few of the time, and we keep it on.
Second, I wonder if there's some sort of part of the discount something that they asked for.
Hold back the motion if air purchase, this, this would be anything.
Second.
Motion, second.
Did you see she's over controlling it?
50?
50.
50 is over controlled. $2,789.50. Motion, a second. Ms. Keisha, call her up, please.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution R02022-2, the public entity partners grant. This was discussed at the work study.
Safety partners?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 072022-2 for the P partner's safety grant.
Second. Motion, I have it out, a second. Mr. Galloway, please. Is there any question on this? Ms. Keisha, call her up, please.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution R0722-4.
Dash three.
Dash three.
I'm ahead of myself. Dash three, the recode adoption. Mr. Galloway presented this as a work study. What we have in the resolutions are the items, I believe, that we're desiring to update in the code for all the items that we beyond wish to update. I'll entertain that.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution R072022-3 of the building code adoption.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Does anybody have any questions about this, or maybe a further?
Oh, are we gonna fire it, or eventually?
We will do a fire cover.
Works working on it, so we can not, we usually don't say not. Right, so that's gonna be just that works, so you can...
This, this is technically a required update to keep us in compliance. So these are the adoptions, I believe, by mirror the county is that they understand the word of Jackson changes the county is every number. Does anybody else have any questions? Ms. Keisha, call her up.
Calvert's?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, Resolution R0722-4, that is the relocation of Pleasant Grove Road. And some caveats to that.
I'm waiting for the motion as we pass this Resolution R0720224.
And motion to relocate Pleasant Grove Road, have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Rector, will you come up here for the discussion portion?
There's not gonna be any changes to what was presented at the work study.
Well, that's what I said, I want him to be able to speak to this.
No, there's not gonna be any changes. That's what we're taking.
He spoke to us about some changes.
But they're not gonna make those.
I know, I read it, but not everybody in the room is aware of it.
Yeah.
So I would...
That's correct, and I do have a copy of the contract between Jeremy and... Mr. Heson, I do have a copy of the contract that y'all might see. But they do have a contract for sale for that strip of property where we're going across. And right now, they're buying the building, their building, and he was putting it up there, just got that home, so he's going first.
How, how much is that property that he's, that's gonna, we're purchasing, or that's being purchased to, like, never take place?
The actual ground was, was $10,000, and the building has cost him 40,000 to buy the building and everything. I think that there could be some things done, we could go to the BCA and talk to them about making a variance on that, since it's a major road improvement, it's not impacted the site distance, and then Andy could come talk to you about that. That's, that's, but the, but the money's been, the contract's solid, it's been signed and everything. As a fact, I gave them a copy of it.
And I will clarify that this only ordinance requires that the developer or the builder be responsible for all the improvements. That is the important thing that we try to discuss and hash out and have the understanding that is what this only ordinance is.
That's correct.
And if you look through the traffic study, the 200 pages, they'll say that those studies are recommended in the traffic study. So it's not being relocated to get... are recommended in the traffic study, so it's not being relocated because they want to be located for the safety of the area and to have the right, mind, and sight if he spoke to you, all those things.
What we understood in the meeting, once this passes, or if it passes, then we can present and continue to with the recommendation from the city.
Thank you. Motion, second. For the relocation of Pleasant Grove Road, we've had discussion, how we'll plan, we'll find a proportion of this contract. He submitted today the construction drawings to our engineer for the review, and it is the way it all started, it looks to me, and it has been acknowledged in our engineer review at some point, and has been prepared to move forward with their project. This road, I believe, is phase seven. The relocation will take place at phase seven, but the temporary road is being requested as an amendment to phase.
Right.
So that's where that all lies. Ms. Keisha, call her up please.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 072022-1. This is the rezoning of 5668 New Highway 31E on First Trading.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 072022-1, rezoning of 5668 New Highway 31E on First Trading.
As recommended by the planning.
As recommended by the planning, question?
Second.
Motion, second. Does anybody have any questions for this?
Is it going from, can I look?
R C two to R one.
It's going one.
C two to R one.
To R one. I didn't know it was commercial property. Well, I bought from accounting, they sold it to this residential.
You sure? Because I think that was the purpose of the rezon. If I had any questions about this, Ms. Keisha, call her up please.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. We will have the second reading and the public hearing of this at the next month. The next item on the agenda is ordinance 072022-2, and that is the request from Mr. Phil Coons to negotiate the contract to terminate his lease. Everyone has a lease in your packet, termination letter, or agreement, and after speaking with Mr. Bradley, there needs to be some major things added to this language, and I will recommend that be.
I'll make a motion for, for study.
At that time, you're going to need to talk about what you want from him for the building. You'll just tip unless somebody out of a year and a half lease without something, you know? And maybe a termination payment of two months or something. Those are the kinds of things you can fill in the blank. I can answer that for you, but when you tell me what that is. Also, we could do the one reading, that need to be an ordinance, a resolution will take care of it. We could even do that the next meeting if you sort of figure out what you want to do.
Ms. Keisha and I went with Mr. Coons into the building, and we walked through the items that he's going to leave in the building, and the, some of the items are valuable, some of the items are not. So those are the documents that we, including the language of the termination letter, plus the, we need to sign with the, turn off the utilities, have five days and all that stuff. So, have a motion to defer. Ms. Keisha, call her up please.
If we get a second.
No.
If we get a second. I'll second.
Have a motion, second, to defer that.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Good motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we had a request for 926 Light Road to install additional streetlights. You have the email in your packet that that additional streetlight cost us per month. We've never, we've never installed streetlights without the council, but I went prior to, and the, the budget to, why I'm out for streetlights is not specific, so there is partly room in the budget to pay this amount for that additional.
I will make a motion to install a streetlight at 926 Light Road.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Ms. Keisha, call her up.
Discussion?
Discussion, okay.
I had, I had an officer go out there tonight, and there was one in the road or street, and there's one at other end, there's nothing in the middle, and that's where this is at. It is needed.
Pretty dark, is it?
Yeah.
I'll see how much it is per month. Sometimes we install multiple lights, and I don't know how they broke down individual like this, but this is for the hundred additional.
For the purpose of full disclosure, it's $6.19 a month.
Yes. Have a motion, second, discussion. Ms. Keisha, call her up.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Thompson, if anyone wants to talk to you. Next item on the agenda is to submit a letter of approval to the Comptroller's Office for a loan for automated water meter system. This, everyone is merely obligated to, the county water line grant proposal. That's what was requested to be put on the agenda. All right, have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we submit to the Comptroller for loan approval for automated water meter system.
Second.
Motion, I'll, second, for David, to submit for the approval of the loan for the automated metering to the Comptroller's Office. Now, let's have the discussion. Core and Main presented a proposal, everyone at the meeting. Their proposal as presented was not the proposal as advertised, and for what we bid out. Their proposal was for AMR, if they matched our request proposal from Suez for the AMI. So if we're going to adopt an AMI, which is what Core and Main presented to us, we've not done advertisements for bids for that project, and also understand that for the AMI competitive to Suez, Core and Main's proposal was more expensive on paper than Suez's proposal. And then the next caveat to that is, Core and Main, when they gave this presentation for the AMR system last month, they had admitted that the propagation study for the control towers was yet to be determined, which would alter that price. All those things aside, when we had some tentative conversations about the initial Suez project and spoke informally to the Comptroller's Office, there was a discussion that the Suez project in terms of the loan agreement would not be approved, and they recommended that we seek loan rates from the local banks. Ms. Keisha did that, and as of yesterday, we received two out of the three.
Two out of the three. But I didn't believe the third one is from a work hall, he was, he was just.
And.
Out of town, must be.
Please understand that the local banks' options on the interest rates were the same one, five, and ten-year terms. Their, their interest rates were higher than the two proposals we've already received from the vendors. So, there is another option on the table that we can go, submit the same information to the USDA and receive a non-commercial loan that would be a much more appealing interest rate, and that information comes through today, but that applies to police department projects, drunk car projects, or any other thing that we qualify, that we can apply to the USDA. So that's another route beyond the local banks that could also put lower those rates and help us to give you either project at a discount price.
And then we also have the Tennessee Department of Homeland Security that was recommended from my consultant, my county consultant at M T S. She said we may want to reach out to them to see if they can typically offer low interest rates on things like this.
Well, it looks to me like we've got the card for the horse right here. We need to decide what we're going to do.
Before we go requesting.
Decide which system we're using.
That's what I said, so we've heard both proposals, but we've not done official requests for the second type of system. I feel like if we're going to do AMR, when you're doing our, people, AMR, you're official.
Well, what else? I would like to just throw this into the equation here, because I'm not sold on AMR. I'm much more sold on AMI than I am AMR. And my reasoning for that is with the way that inflation's going at the moment, and the way that everything's going up in price, we've got an AMI option on the table that is a very good, all-encompassing, wholly-contained project that will offer us and our consumers a much better experience when dealing with their customer service, when dealing with their leaks, when dealing with their replacements of a meter that's faulty. It provides us with a better option when replacing a faulty meter, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but when they have a faulty meter, as a part of their warranty, they come out and replace it with Suez. With Core and Main, if we go AMR on that route, we're out the cost, Aaron's guys have to do it, or we have to pay a third party to come in and replace it. That kind of tips the scale in my, my mind towards Suez with an AMI system. The second side of that is with the customer service that goes along with the, supporting the, the consumer and defending them against leaks and massive water bills, because they read these meters every hour on the AMI system. Any, any, any member of the utility district will not have to worry about having to come before us to have to seek a, an adjustment on their water bill, because they're going to get a phone call, if it's Suez, saying, hey, we noticed them have more than a large amount of usage from your, from you, is this, are you doing something to cause this? And they're going to know immediately, hey, I need, I got a problem, if they're not. My last little caveat here goes specifically towards Aaron here. Aaron's guys bust their rear end seven days a week sometimes, and get very little praise and do more in a week than what most of us do in a month, in terms of physical labor. And if we go with an AMI system, it's going to save him, it's going to buy him a whole lot of time to be able to address things such as our water loss issues, and being able to devote a team of men to go out and address a leak or a leaky water line, or replacing a section of water line, or something of that nature, so we can bring our water loss down from near 30% to a respectable level, and hopefully cut that in half, which the Suez proposal, and even the Core and Main proposal with the acoustic leak detection, being able to narrow in and hone in on those zones of leaks, will save Aaron, Aaron's budget specifically, from having to purchase a contract with someone to come in and find these leaks for us. It's already going to be doing that in the system. And yes, it's going to, it's, it's a large project, but we can either spend that money now, or we can do our project halfway and spend that money plus an exorbitant amount after the inflation is settled in 10 years. It's, it's just like if you, if you go put a roof on your house, you can put a 20-year roof on your house, and in 20 years, you're still having to worry about your roof. You go put a 50-year roof on your house, and that's your kid's problem when you have to face it again, when it comes back around. So if you do it right the first time, and in my opinion, AMI is the right way to go, if you do it right the first time, we don't have to worry about it again. Our kids don't have to worry about it anywhere near like what we're worrying about it right now. And we're in the problem we're in because we've continued to kick the can down, down the road for the entire life of our utility district. And eventually, one or all of us are going to have to come together as, as part of this board and, and set a line and say, we're not going to continue to be the councils of old of Westmoreland, we're going to have to begin to face the problems, whether we receive a whole lot of backlash or, or not, we're going to have to face the problems and, and face the tough times ahead in order to take care of these issues and set ourselves up for the future. Just like Lionel said in his, his, his devotion earlier, we have to be looking down the road for our kids' purposes, not right now. I mean, I know it's an election year, and everybody wants to look to November, but we've got to look 20 years ahead, not three months ahead, four months ahead.
If I'm right, with you and AMI system, we move that direction, it also aids toward our asset management, and that adds to another piece that we're needing to go do, have to do.
Yes.
But that's something we can't do tonight, but we can discuss it, work study, and then if we have to, because I know there, there's a time schedule here.
I want to ask Mr. Bradley about the technical aspect, if we want to pursue this at the Comptroller's Office, do they need to, on a dollar amount that we're going to pursue in the Comptroller's Office approval?
I don't know how you ask a good lawyer if you're going with that.
That was it, so. If we're, if we're having an AMI system. I will say that Suez down there, they've been, they've been partnered with us, they communicate with us, and they've told us everything we needed to know from their side where they're repetitive, and admittedly said they had just a few days for this proposal to get.
So their proposals were, were equal.
They were part of the same. They were a part of the same RFP, there's no further bidding process that has to be, has to take place.
The next step is to get approval from the Comptroller's Office if we're going to do an AMI system.
Do we have the dollar amount with us?
And do we have to award a project prior to seeking?
Is that correct?
Approval.
I'm not waiting on award if you might not get the money.
Right.
We need to, we need to vote to seek approval for a certain amount of money from the Comptroller's Office.
Figure out, whichever bid you choose, you're going to use that amount of money, and that's what you go to the Comptroller's Office and ask for.
Okay.
You can notice, I know that you're trying to, that you want them to get the bid, but you got to get the financing, so they know that you're still interested. You want to go up to a certain dollar amount too, so maybe want to lean on the high side so you don't come in short.
Yeah, we could make adjustments to have a letter that includes the dollar amount.
And when I contacted the banks, the amount that I asked them to give me rates on was the total for the Suez project without the yearly maintenance fee. I guess that's the way they had, I believe, their payment thing broke out was just the system itself, and then the yearly maintenance fee on top of that.
So if we call a special power meeting like 15 minutes before the work study, that gives, that gives time for everybody, that, that two weeks.
I believe we have, we know the dollar amount. I believe we have, we know the dollar amount.
That's on the agenda to do that.
We can do anything of the time, so I'll need to.
But we can, we can.
Get to the comptroller for loan approval. Does that mean agenda?
We, but we haven't selected which one we're gonna use a lot.
He said we need to. He said we needed to get a dollar amount.
Right.
Of funding before we can award.
But we've got to vote on which one we're gonna do. And we've not done that.
When you do that, you'll know your dollar amount.
Right, right.
So you hear one.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna set a date, two weeks from now to do, to do that, at work study?
Well, it calls a special meeting before.
Yeah, it calls a special order.
And then we can still.
At the special meeting, the first, uh, first select which bidder you want, which system you want. I have a second item on the agenda to seek approval for a loan that amount in the comptroller's office. Or you could put from the TML Loan Basel Fund or whatever, and there are a lot of different funds available.
So just for, because one of these, one of these bids expires at the end of August, that price. So for the, in the interest of, of time, because for certain reasons, this project is drug out far longer than what it should have, the decision-making on this project. Can we submit a request to the comptroller's office for the larger of the two bids? That way we are safe in the dollar amount?
They wanna evaluate what it is you're buying though. I mean, that's, it's more than just saying you're loving now. Well, you've got plenty of time. If you're gonna meet the first, the first Thursday, end of August, to have a special meeting and you have to regular meeting the third Thursday in August, by then you should be done and then you can accept their proposal and their bid won't expire.
You think the comptroller's office will get back to this set quick?
Yes.
Okay.
Keisha, so they're pretty quick. They turn around in a hurry. They got the information they need. That's the main thing.
As long as I have contracts, if you guys decide to go with us before the end of that August timeframe, we're good. It locks your pricing in. So if you get on the timeline he's talking about, we'll leave, your price will be locked in once you vote you're going with us. And then, you know, any contractual stuff, we can get lawyers together and figure that out pretty quick.
I won't withdraw my motion. Who made the motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Did I second?
Yeah.
Okay, I know it was wrong again.
And then I will make a motion to defer this to the special call meeting. If there's
one called, you just call it. I have, I have one more person to do.
Well, you know, you know.
If you get a second, that's, that's the second. If you second your motion, that's got it.
They can get you to go over and just call it.
Okay, so you said fifteen minutes prior to, so like about forty-five.
Yeah. We don't discuss that. We too wish.
I'll explore.
Ms. Keisha, call the row on, defer this to special call.
Brown.
Yes.
Albert.
Yes.
What person?
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. Yes.
We'll get the, I believe that is all the items on the agenda.
That was always.
That's all the items on the agenda. Okay. Long version and a shorter.
That was a short version.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is to purchase an SUV ready for coves and buildings.
We've got a couple of different companies we've gone through in the past. There's two in Chicago. One, Chicago Motors, Motors Incorporated. And then Asia Motors, they specialize in used police vehicles. The, the car that I'm driving, we got from Chicago Motors. And we got a K nine vehicle that's twenty-four-ten that our cannon officer drives. I think we got it from Asia Motors, but, um, I check regularly on gov deals. Sometimes you'll really look up like we did with the car that Ray drives. But right now, there's really nothing out there that's, that's really where we need to be. So really what I'm looking for is I feel like we can find a, a really decent reliable vehicle, but we'll have to spend eighteen, twenty thousand dollars to be sure it's gonna last a while. So, and I think we've got the money there. So it depends on how you all wanna do it. Um, if you want me to get a couple, they go really quick is what becomes kind of an issue. Um, if you want me to get a couple, if I go find some tomorrow that look like, man, this is a really good deal, it might be gone by the time I get approval. So, but I'm looking for some guidance on what you all recommend. In the past, I've been able to get good deals years ago off some of our business account. But I'm just asking to know what your opinion is of it. Ultimately, we need approval to be able to spend up to a certain amount of getting a used car. If you all want to know what it is and are there, if I can send it by email or something like that, I don't, I don't know how that would help you all for approval on any particular vehicle.
Is the money in the budget?
This, that's the first.
It's not appropriated.
This is money that we discussed, well, in the hope for.
From last year.
This, you lack this.
But it's not been appropriated for a vehicle.
It's not been low over from this previous year's budget to this year.
It's not been covered this morning, but it's a lot.
So it's just part of the general fund.
I want a purchase order, anything tied to that.
There's, there's.
It's gonna take two weeks in order for it to do that unless you've got somewhere else with a budget that you can, a resolution transfer it. So you might wanna add that item on your August fourth special meeting, first reading of the purchase of an SUV. We can have a second reading two weeks after that and go know what you got then.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And you shop and that's deal. You have the money appropriated.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. We have, we have a man motion. So I'll make a motion to add this to the special call meeting for August the fourth to, to, to discuss the SUV purchase for coves and buildings.
Motion.
Alex and I both.
I'll give it to Alex. Give it to Alex.
Much more, you might want like that meeting five-thirty.
I was supposed to have a mic or anything.
It's probably safer. You know, you never know what you get into. That's up to you guys. I don't count it.
You do.
All in favor of, uh, moving this item to the special call meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The, uh, next item on the agenda is to, uh, renew the police department loan to renovate the nine twelve building for their needs.
I make a motion to renew the police department loan to renovate nine twelve Park Street.
I'm gonna second that. So we'll discuss it for a minute.
Can I start discussing?
Yes.
Well, if you had something, I know you said anything. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there's no reason for us to, uh, move forward with things right now until we get items leaked, until we get the building back. Right now, we don't have the control of the building. He might decide to keep it.
Yeah, rather than paying you money for a few months, he might decide to just keep it. So you can't, this one takes a really long.
Let, let's, also, this loan is paid off. When?
The loan is already paid off. The money is in this year's budget, the monthly payment I'm out. We just looked it in there to go towards a new loan.
So we can decide to do it whichever, whichever time we want to do it.
Yes.
So since we're in discussion mode, I, I wanna take it a step further and ask what, um, what is, what construction, uh, what contractors have looked at the building?
Having any money because we don't know for sure.
Right.
Where we made the loan.
I think once we get past the, the lease situation, I think then we can take the next step. Well, once it's back in the city's hands and the lease is cleared, then I think we can take that next step. And I think the next step would be to find out how much we need a loan for to determine renovation. Um, I'd love to have that building as a police department. You know, my, I'm not, I'll make that point very, very transparent because I do think it's a waste of space what we're doing right now. So I'm all in favor, but I think we need to make sure we put our stasis in the right order.
That reapproval of that one will also be a comptroller's office.
Right.
So that's what.
So when you defer that, you defer the next time to their time again.
We have, we have a motion.
So I'll retract my motion. I make a motion to defer this.
And, and I didn't know exactly how, sorry, that it could, it could be that, it could be that you all as a council want to look at other ways to do it. I just knew that that's five hundred and thirty-three dollar per month that, that we're now saving because that is paid off. So that could go towards whatever you decide to do on renovation.
Did you speak personally to the, to the USDA?
No. I, I have, I have found out, and I don't know how true this is. Apparently, from what I'm standing, when it comes to loans to, um, renovate or do those buildings, they're kind of like a DA loan and they're extremely, it can become a lot more expensive because of the things that they'll require for us to do versus one of the local banks. So it may not be a very.
It might be a, you're, you're correct. It might be a discounted rate, but their requirements to receive it could be much greater. Also, it's more money. Ms. Keisha spoke with him today and he's had a list of the things that he would need for the different levels of the thing that we're talking about, how to find it. So it won't hurt to explore the alternative, especially if we got to make the decision to get it right.
I know we do this all night long because no, especially on referral.
So we have, we need to take a run.
We're gonna combine both these items.
Because we accept the renovate motion.
I'm in my motion to include the next line item to relocate police departments nine twelve Park Street on the completed renovations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that the last?
I don't even know what I just said. Get motion, uh, ten seconds.
The item on the agenda is revoke Captain Ray, I cannot pronounce his last name.
Nick Clawsy, it's easy. It's a little easier.
It's a little easier.
To Assistant Chief.
Stop that.
I couldn't spell it right at first. I, two or three times, then I'll check it.
Now I will make a motion to promote Captain Ray to Assistant Chief with a four-dollar hour increase.
Second.
Your motion, second. In your long form notes for the agenda this afternoon, Ms. Keisha researched this item a little bit, uh, and she totally spoke to me like briefly. Uh, Ray's current job description says captain and assistant chief. And the original motion, when that took place, was for two dollar an hour per, hour raise. And the council didn't time it before it to be a dollar.
Dollar, yeah.
So, uh, the paperwork and everything said two dollars. It was just got approved at a dollar. So I will, if we're, I wanna make certain everybody understands, the job description says assistant chief and he's already working under that for ten.
Well, it's been, it's been the assistant chief badge on it too, because the captain raise.
Even in the two dollars that we're claiming.
What is your opinion on that?
To you, that's, that's not a real decision.
But if you, if you give the one dollar raise, the end assistant chief on it, he's still got the same job description. Because he does a great job. He's got a heavy workload.
So the motive is to, uh, promote Ray officially as the assistant chief.
So is he still gonna be, is he gonna be like the captain slash assistant?
No, I, the way the, I noticed at the, the police department policy, it has it as captain slash assistant chief. So when I made the motion to you all who know him, I thought, well, at that time, we're just gonna make him captain. But you're right, it does kinda say the same job description for each. So now I, I think that he, I would like him to be designated as assistant chief on a different badge and different color and signature.
And the way I understand, you're not wanting to feel like captain.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a motion, second. I'm ready.
That is correct.
Call for him.
All in favor, maybe it's a all-in favor, promote, promote Ray to assistant chief for a dollar, Paul Brown, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm very very.